Let's all stand and have a moment of silence followed by the pledge. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands before us. One nation, indivisible, and free of any person. Alright, I've got a couple of things here I need to read. First one, it says Monroe County Board of Education is meeting in call session under the extended guidelines of Executive Order Number 71, which extends the authority to conduct meetings electronically through February 27, 2021. We will make reasonable efforts to stream this meeting live. In the event that live streaming is not possible, a clear audio or video recording of this meeting will be made available to the public on Monroe County Schools website within two business days. Under the Declaration of Conflict, per TCA 49-2-202, Board of Education members who have relatives, per the statute, relative means spouse, parent, parent-in-law, child, son-in-law, daughter-in-law, grandparent, grandchild, brother, sister, uncle, aunt, nephew, niece, or any person who resides in the same household as you, employed by the system, are asked to raise your hands to identify yourself. You certify that the votes that you make tonight or today will be in the best interest of the school system, regardless of the effect that your vote may have upon the employment of your relative or relatives. Okay, we've got this call meeting. And I called this meeting to, I guess, to say, give Dr. McClendon some input from the board in terms of kind of where we think we are and where we need to go. And of course, it's her decision on how we go from here. We had some information came to us in the last 30 minutes about immunizations of teachers. As you know, the governor has made that a higher priority than it was. And I've asked Dr. McClendon to begin the meeting to kind of bring us up to date on that because that could impact what we do as far as opening schools back up. Dr. McClendon?
Yes. Okay, so good, good morning or good afternoon, everyone. Dr. Strickland, and we're going to begin with the end in mind. So, Dr. Strickland, would you put up our PowerPoint and begin with the fourth slide, please? If you would look at the fourth slide, of course, I previously had sent these out. And as you said, I have been on the phone constantly with Ms. Harrell and Nurse Jackie, and they've been contacting our regional health office with Dr. Sturdevent. And so what you're referring to is, just recently, I guess, within the last couple of hours, Putnam County decided that they would delay the opening of school so that their teachers wanted to could receive the vaccine in hopes of keeping their community somewhat safer. So if you look at the third option, we've kind of laid everything out there. The third option, in working with Teresa Harrell and Dr. Sturdevent, we would be able to get all of our teachers vaccinated on Saturday, January the 9th. So we would delay opening of the school until January 11, 2021, to give all staff members who would like to an opportunity to receive the COVID vaccine vaccines on Saturday, January the 9th. Now, Ms. Harrell and I have talked extensively, but what we have in mind, and this is not written in stone yet because this just happened all in the last 30 minutes. We would work with someone in her office and Nurse Jackie, and of course, our central office, and we would schedule teachers who would like to because they have to have an appointment on that Saturday. And Ms. Harrell said she could bring in extra employees. And therefore, we would have a system of actually helping the teachers ahead who would like to and become vaccinated. Now, a couple of things to think about through that. And Ms. Harrell, would you pick up right there and tell us some more about that process and what would be available? And then I'll come back.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McClendon. As we've talked about this earlier today, one of the things, and I'd talked actually with Dr. Sturdevent this morning, when she, we had talked about the governor's decision to bump the teachers up. We are right now in the phase of 75 and older. We definitely don't want to knock any of those folks out of getting their vaccine, but we also want to be able to accommodate the teachers. And I think Dr. McClendon's plan is a good plan if we kind of go to this option. And the one thing that I did, we don't, I will have to know or know for sure on Monday to see, you know, getting vaccine in. I mean, we've got enough vaccine for our Saturday clinics and then the first of the week. So we didn't get any information yesterday as to when our next shipment is going to arrive. But I do know that some of the other counties that received the Pfizer vaccine actually had extra Moderna, so they're moving that around within the region. We have the Moderna vaccine. So hopefully, and that's what, once I know Monday, it'll actually, you know, to see exactly, and then we can schedule. And I think doing, we do a Saturday clinic, that this, that will give Jackie time to, and Dr. McClendon, to see how many teachers actually in school personnel. I really feel like we need to vaccinate. If we're going to do teachers, we need to do everybody. I mean, we need to do, you know, the cafeteria workers and support staff as well. So, once we kind of, and they get a plan in place to see the number, then we can look about scheduling, whether we do by last name or, you know, there's different ways that we can go about that. But I'm real confident that our staff can take care of that. We did yesterday 110 vaccines. And we're doing like so many per hour because we really need people to stay for at least 15 to 20 minutes to make sure that they don't have any reaction. Knock on wood, so far, we haven't, everybody's been good. We've had, we hadn't had anybody have any type of adverse reaction, so that's good. But I think we can do it if I can just get our ducks in a row to make sure that we got the vaccine. And I think your staff's going to feel better when they do return to school. The thing about it is, it's 10 days out with the first shot to start building up some of the immunity. And then after the second shot, and that's the other thing, Jackie, I've just thought about that now. We'll have to think about another clinic when we do the second shot in 28 days. So hopefully, we could do that on a Saturday as well.
But could, could we do it even on our remote learning day?
Oh, absolutely, yes, good idea.
Exactly 28, it needs to be exactly 28 days? And we can talk about that.
I think there's a four-day window. I think there's a four-day window, so that would give us some options as well. So, I think it's totally doable. And Dr. Sturdevent was on board with it as well. She said that would really, if we could do it before they go back to school, then I think it would be to our advantage, to be honest with you.
So, what our schedule would look like currently next week is that on Monday, our teachers would come in for staff development. And what I would recommend is, if we took this, if you guys decided on this option for delay, that we would take that Monday, the 4th, as a remote staff development day. And principals could zoom with different teams of teachers, teacher teams could zoom together. We could get a very solid head count on how many employees actually want to. I know Ms. Harrell and I talked about that, and she said it's been about half. So we have probably close to about 800, 850 employees, including, we want to even offer it to bus drivers. So we know that she would probably have to vaccinate maybe about 400 to 450 individuals who wanted it. And so we could even use the latter part of next week too, Ms. Harrell.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, so, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just thinking we can do, because we're going to be doing, what our schedule for next week, so far, is Monday, Wednesday, Friday vaccinations. And then Tuesday, Thursday, half a day, we do testing. And you wouldn't believe, testing, everybody wants to be tested. So we did a close to 100 Thursday. What is today's Thursday? Tuesday, I mean. So Tuesday, we did, so we're going to keep our morning testing like at 10 o'clock and then in the afternoon. So actually, we'll be vaccinating every single day. It'll just be different on Tuesday and Thursday in the afternoon. So yes, Dr. McClendon, that would be an option, for sure.
And I, we already have February 5th scheduled as a remote learning day, which would be that 28-day window, just FYI.
I had tried to count it really quick, so I'm glad you were able to confirm it. That makes, so great. So back to, so what would happen then is we would use that Monday as a remote staff development day. And the reason why we wouldn't change that day is because we already have an approved calendar into the state. And so we don't, I don't know that we have time to get a response back if we do this, but we can keep that as a remote day as professional development. Then Tuesday through Friday, we would have to use those as inclement weather days. And the reason why is the state has said that we must use all of our inclement weather days prior to us switching to a full, a full clip. So that's not an option to use those four days as remote learning. We would, the state would require that we use those four days as inclement weather days as we delay. Or you could also extend the end of the school year, which I'm sure nobody at this point wants to do that. So now, if we go, any questions before we go back to the beginning of the PowerPoint?
Yes, if we use all our inclement weather days, what are we going to do if we get snow and have to shut down? Because we got February, March.
Yes, so what we would have to do, hopefully, we would be able to have all our devices out and those, instead of being inclement weather days, we would use those as remote learning days.
Okay, thank you.
At that point, okay. So, Dr. Strickland, can you go back to Slide 1? So just a couple of things that we want to just be aware of. On December the 30th, we still had 577 active cases in Monroe County. We know that active case count does not require that you close down your school. It just means there are a couple of other factors that were in our Tennessee Department of Health rubric that cause us to have to close for the 14 days. And that's if you're having lots of COVID cases, they're unrelated. In cases of that nature, they have those yes and no questions that we shared previously before school was out at the end of the semester. Next slide, please. Okay, another good question to think about is our virtual school enrollment. As of December the 18th, we have 4,949 total students who are enrolled in virtual, I mean, total students. We have 894 that are virtual, so we're at 18.1% number of virtual students at this time. If we decided that we were going to delay or other things, we feel pretty good about opening the window back open for people who have expressed concern about a Thanksgiving spike or other concerns in the community about the level of our active COVID cases. And so delaying would give us that window or that option. But even if not, we would offer that opportunity to a few people who maybe just have become very uncomfortable with their children attending on a day-to-day basis. Next slide, please. So we're back to our actual options. As I said, we began with the end in mind. Our current calendar is that January 4th would be a staff development day. January 5th, students would return to school. Options for return, option 1 would be open on a normal schedule for all students and just kind of see what happens. I think that Harrell and Ms. Gray have both expressed a great deal of concern about us using that option just because they think we'll start to have those spikes. Like, we're not in the middle of the Christmas spike yet. And would, if Nurse Jackie or Nurse Harrell would either one like to speak to that?
I think we will see a spike, just like we did over Thanksgiving. And I mean, we were seeing, and like I said, it was two weeks after that. And Jackie can definitely talk about more with the schools, but just in general, I mean, we were seeing every single day an increase of cases by 80, 90, you know. So I did notice yesterday, we had 62 new cases. And I was like, yay. I mean, even though that's a high number, that's lower than it has. But our positivity rate for the county is at 29.2%. So that's extremely high, and we're still in the red zone.
Yes, Teresa.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Jackie, go ahead.
I agree with everything that you've said. And out of those 62 new cases yesterday, seven were ages of five to 18-year-olds. And I just went back and looked at some of the data from the county site, back to like December the 6th through the 12th. We had, there was the age, the five to 18-year-olds represented about 16% of the new active cases that week. And as I went back and looked, I've noticed that while we've been out for school, been out for Christmas, our, you know, our percentage is, of course, the five to 18-year-old, of course, that's what I always look at. But it's dropped to 5, 5.7%. And just this week, you know, it was, which was only, I've only looked at four days this week, but it was about 10%. So before we got out for, before we got out for Christmas break, we were, you know, our staff and students together were representing right at 24, 25% of our new active cases. And so, you know, that has, since we, I've heard many people say, well, we're not sure that it really helps for them to be out. Well, I mean, the numbers have shown that they've evidently been, you know, I mean, it's decreased somewhat. So I do believe that being able to separate them a little bit helps tremendously. And I agree, you know, as far as the Christmas spike, if we did delay and give the teachers opportunities to get the shots, then that would be very beneficial.
Okay, thank you, guys. And so the other option would be option 2, which is open with the Plan B schedule. I will be the first to admit that the Plan B schedule is not very popular with our elementary and middle school teachers. And because high school, the students will come on Monday and Tuesday, half, and then the other half, and we made a, we made a small error there, we checked it 1,000 times. It would be Wednesday and Thursday so that the older kids could be out for remote learning with their siblings. I think we made that change at the December board meeting. But the reason why that's important is that provides, the older children can be at home by themselves, which that seems to be a large area of spread. Teachers don't particularly care for Plan B because it would mean they're almost in a lockdown situation where their children are only around the same five or six. That means that teachers would kind of rotate through the classrooms. Kids remain in place and the teachers would, would move from classroom to classroom. And we heard several teachers say they really like to stay in their own classroom. They don't like the idea of Plan B. Also, Plan B, another reason we have it that way, Tennessee law does not designate an age in which children should be left at home alone. But I think just in good consciousness, I think if you're not probably around 12 or 13, I'm kind of leery of us asking parents to leave younger children or younger siblings, watching even younger siblings at home, if we went to some sort of schedule like the high school is. So we're talking about two different age groups there. And then in option 3, what I call a soft, a soft opening, we would move into Plan B just for that Tuesday through Friday time. And then on Monday, everybody would all return to normal. So I would ask for some grace and mercy with our teachers and our administrators in those four days being on Plan B if the board so requested. And then, of course, the option that we just talked about extensively when we began our meeting would be the option to delay so that those who would want to, and I want to just be very clear, it's only those who would want to could be vaccinated on later in next week and on Saturday. And then we would all return to school with students regular on Monday. Okay, I think that probably sums it up. I don't know if Dr. Windsor or Dr. Strickland, do you guys either one have anything you want to add?
I don't think so. We have had several requests in the last week or so to go virtual. So we anticipate there will be some more interest in students applying for virtual school. So we're happy to open that window back up for another week to see what happens there. I don't think it'll be a huge difference, but I do think we'll have a few more students who would like to go virtual just because of the anxiety, increased anxiety from the, from the spike in numbers.
Dr. Windsor, have you heard anything from your principal group or anything of that nature you might want to share?
No, I haven't, I haven't really heard anything. I think they're just kind of waiting to see what the numbers show and what direction we are leaning. I think that's pretty much where they are, just kind of in standby mode.
Very good, thank you. That, that would be all, Ms. Virgil. I think that staff or myself has to present.
And any board members have questions for any of these ladies that have talked?
Teresa and Jackie?
Yes.
I had something on my mind about, and it always sound real good, especially option 3, part of the delay. The, it's a new, they say, it's more contagious. It's new, new virus is coming up that suspects younger kids more than anything. Have y'all heard anything about that? I've just been hearing it on the news. How would you think that might affect us going back to school full blown? Can y'all answer that? I mean, I know it's.
Do you want to, go ahead, Jackie?
Yeah, as far as the new strain, and it's interesting that you say that, Mr. Upton, because I have not heard yet that it would affect children more. I had heard that it's a different, you know, a variant.
Younger, younger, more, I mean, younger.
Younger, okay, younger ones. Basically, all that I have heard as far as that goes is just that, I guess, I wondered, one of my questions was how much of the vaccine that we're fixing to get or that we've gotten will help? And if I'm not mistaken, Teresa, am I right, that the vaccine that we're getting, they said it would, we're hoping that it would also help a little bit against that strain as well? I'm sorry, I really haven't heard much more than that about it.
I haven't either, Jackie and Mr. Upton. Just what I've heard on the news, I did actually have a first responder yesterday in Loudoun. We were talking about it, and he said that he had heard that it was in Colorado. And then he's heard that there were some cases in Atlanta, which really upset me.
California was one.
Yeah. Of what? I'm sorry.
California.
Oh, California.
It was one in Colorado, I heard it.
Okay, so my thought is too, same as Jackie, we just have to pray that it's, you know, I just, I'll be honest, I can't imagine another 10 months like we've gone through. It's just been overwhelming and it's just been, it's just been really, really hard. So I hope and pray that this vaccine does work with that strain too. But I definitely will keep everybody updated as I learn more about that. But I'll be honest, we haven't received anything from our department about it yet, so.
And I, you know, I try to read or look for anything that I can find, and I know Teresa does too. And so there's just not a lot of information out there about it just yet, other than what we're hearing on the news.
And I will say, I want to just also say too, how much I appreciate the Department of Education. You guys have been just great, great partners through all this, and that's, that has meant a lot. So Jackie and I are forever best friends, so.
That was what I was going to say to you, Ms. Harrell.
Good on you, to the health workers.
We surely appreciate you. And like I said, I think we talk daily or hourly sometimes. So I just want to say a big thank you to you and Jackie publicly for always taking my calls and trying to help us work through keeping our community and our children safe.
Oh, thank you, Dr. McClendon. You have been great to work with, and you've been so proactive with the county and this, in keeping, you know, the kids first in mind. And you've done an excellent job, and I really appreciate that. Because I'll be honest with you guys, in a lot of other counties, it doesn't work like this. And we are so fortunate to have Dr. McClendon guiding on this ship on the education side because it definitely, like I say, in other counties, just when I get on calls with the other county directors and they tell a lot what's going on in their counties, and they don't have the close partnership that we have. And that means a lot. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
I've got a question.
Okay.
This is probably for Deanna and Teresa. What do you recommend that we do? I like option 4, but I want your, I would like to hear what you all think would be our best option for keeping our kids safe and keeping the teachers safe. Can you give us just a little more specific direction here?
So, so I'm going to defer to Teresa and Jackie. And the reason why I want to, I'm not passing the buck and I'll come back after them. We're in a mindset that things are normal and that everything should, should move on as it is. And I am of that mindset too. But whether we want to admit it or not, we are in a pandemic. And I would say that I have numerous employees who are afraid and are very, very scared. And I don't want a teacher to ever come to work and be fearful of what she might pick up. Now, the other side of that coin is, I'm a parent, you know, I have two school-aged daughters. I have talked extensively with many, many parents, and they want us to be open. And I'm one of those parents too, who says, our children, we need to be open and we need to be in school. So when I'm looking at both sides of those, I'd like to hear what the health professionals think because you can't learn, you can't work, you can't teach if you're not here. And that's important. So Ms. Harrell and Ms. Gray, I want you to kind of respond to Ms. Standridge first.
Well, I think the option of delaying for a week, and then however you say to do that, Dr. McClendon, with, you know, teachers maybe coming in for the in-service and that. I think if we delay for a week, that will give us the opportunity at the Health Department to make sure we got the vaccine, to get the vaccination schedule set up. And then Jackie to get, you know, with the teachers to see who wants to take it. I think that'll buy us some time. And then by the time they go back the following Monday, Tuesday, then they will already receive the vaccination, they'll feel good about that. I mean, they're not going to be totally immune till, I think it's a week with the first dose and then, you know, getting the second dose. But, yeah, but at least they're going to have the vaccine. And then that gives another little bit of time that students, you know, before they come back and start, you know, the gatherings. But, I mean, you guys have done a really good job as far as the mask, you know, and that. But I think it would just buy us a little time here on the front end, and it'll be worth it in the long run. Jackie, is that what you kind of think too?
Well, I definitely do agree with what you're saying as far as the delaying and getting their vaccine. And then if I could just add one other thing, I have, of course, you know, I have family and, well, friends that are principals. And I try to just listen a lot when we're, you know, out and about in conversations. And Dr. McClendon has referred to the fact that a lot of the middle school principals or some of the teachers there may not be fond of the hybrid plan. However, I think the part that I Um, however, I think the part that I have heard from them that they don't like about that plan is, um, for instance, if they have a large classroom, because I think the whole point of those plans is to decrease the amount of exposure. So if you, you know, if you, if you decrease the amount of kids that are in school every day, then you can separate, you know, separate the classes. So you're having part of the kids come one day to the two days and part of the kids come another two days. So that you're, the whole point of that is to make your classes smaller, so you can do the six feet difference. Well, um, for instance, I have someone that said, well, in some of our larger classes, in our eighth grade classes, I have 28 kids in that class. And, um, so how can I possibly space out 28 kids and be there all day? So what I have heard is that they would like to, the middle schools especially, would like to operate more on the high school level. And, and, you know, kind of be a, maybe have the freedom to look at their classes individually and be able to still space those out. I personally feel like hi- the hybrid plan is the safer plan, because you decrease the amount of time that the kids are around each other. Um, you know, I, that's just my personal thought on that. Um, as far as elementary schools and them being in that classroom for the most part of the day and then the teachers moving from place to place. And, you know, that makes, that makes a lot more sense to me. And I may be muddying in the water with that, Dr. McClendon. Um, but, but that's just how I personally feel about it. Um, just based on some of the, some of the data and stuff that I've looked at. I, I think the hybrid plan is safer as far as being able to space each other out in social distance, however.
Move, quick question, you think we should move to the hybrid plan prior to the delay of opening?
No, no. When we come back, uh, you know, if we can see, instead of just, I mean, no, I, I 100% think the delay until they get the vaccine. But, uh, you know, I think as you're looking at how, as you guys are maybe considering how we should come back as far as, I mean, I know the plan, one of the options was to come back, you know, for that week. Uh, but then, um, I'm wondering if you all, you know, if it might be safer just to do the hybrid plan for a while longer than just the four days.
So Teresa, um, and I may ask you this question. I know Loudoun County has had very good luck with, and, and in the middle school, I know you're talking about the 28 children. But in talking on some of our health council calls, Loudoun was able to have their classes the same size, but they're the five. So basically, uh, if I'm a middle school student and I'm even with a pack of 28, I'm still only around those same five.
Those same, yeah. And that was so easy. Yeah. Oh, no, I'm sorry. No, that, and that was what s- made the contact tracing so much easier, because they could trace the folks that were sitting in front of them, behind them, on each side, and they're staying at the same place all day.
So, so, um, I think back to Ms. Standridge is, I, I think I agree that maybe the delay, even though I'm a parent and I want mine to come back, they need to come back, they're already behind. Um, I think that maybe the delay, uh, until those who would like to can have the vaccine. And then we'll see where our numbers are that Monday. And depending on where our numbers are that Monday as a community, we could yet again discuss, uh, if we want to come back in, uh, or we can discuss today and you guys tell me what you would like me, like us to do as far as coming, um, back. I, I still just real cautious about, um, placing, um, an 11 or 12-year-old, uh, who might be in middle school at home by themselves without an older sibling. I, I just, I don't, I have an 11-year-old. She cannot stay at home by herself. Okay. I hope that helps.
John, can I, can I step in here, John?
Well, just a minute. Let me say this.
John.
I, I'd like to hear from the board. We've heard from a lot of folks here, but I'd like to hear from the board, because I know if you're like me, you've had several phone calls. You've had several people stop you wherever you've been and talk to you about it. So, uh, at this point, I think let's, let's let the board kind of, uh, talk about what you think and what you've heard here today and, and what you've heard beforehand, so.
Can I jump in here, John? I've listened to all this right here and I've, I've wrote all my stuff down right here, so I wouldn't forget it. And all the information, uh, they presented, uh, very well presented is based on the present numbers, uh, that we have 600 and something active cases. And our main concern here has got to be for Monroe County, the safety education of our children and our, and our staff. That's got to be that. Uh, so this is some information I've gotten from the CDC, the Tennessee Department of Health, uh, the World Health Organization and all that. These are just some facts that I hear that I want to, the board to consider, uh, in making their decision. Uh, number one, the Tennessee is a predominantly use a PCR test, which is a polymerase chain reaction test to identify positive cases of COVID-19. We've all seen this in the drive-by and the lines at the hospital and the advertisement. And according to the laboratory guidance from the, uh, Tennessee Department of Health, there's no requirement that any clinical observation or apparent history be included in these reports. Okay? With that being said, the World Health Organization sent out on December the 14th, warning about false positive reports, uh, from the PCR as a result of feedback from the labs throughout the country. They advised, uh, the World Health Organization advised that any positive test also take in consideration specimen type, clinical observation, patient history, the epidemiological information, and not rely solely on the positive test, which is our main testing thing, our main probably relies on PCR. The, uh, World Health fur- further warns that PCR tests use a, this threshold test, that's the number of tests that's given. And, uh, since Monroe County is a rural area with a low population density, but according to Tennessee, we have a high number of that. So the World Health Organization warns that a high positivity rate in an area of low that, uh, is a good indication that po- uh, false positive tests standing alone should not be used to determine active cases. Uh, so with that being said, with our high number, we're basing our information so far on this high number. Well, according to World Health Organization, we shouldn't be using this. And there's no indication that Tennessee Department of Health uses all three bits of information to determine this. So, so far, all we've talked about is this 600 and something cases. And in our area, we have not taken into consideration that, that we are a sparse county and it should be a low number. And that, uh, cycle of frequency means that if you have just a few tests, then you get the COVID, then you have it. If you start having a high, high number, uh, of act- of cases, we don't know if that's an actual active cases or it's a false positive. Uh, so from that right there, there's a lot of growing anger, uh, within our community. And so I like to know for a fact, uh, I don't know if we can direct our director or what. I like to know for a fact if these numbers are truly active cases based on not just the PCR, which is our predominant information. I'd like to know if this is, takes into all consideration, because everything we talked about so far is based on these numbers. And it says a spike. Uh, I've heard the word spike several times. Well, Tennessee Department of Health says right here, report I've got, it says they're scaling back on testing and because, and they think that the, uh, numbers will, uh, will fall backwards, uh, and because of the, the vaccine. If the vaccine, as they said, uh, then if we put off school another few days, well, it's a week before they get it. So with all that in, with all that information right there, I'd like for us to consider that with all these, uh, top world health organizations, the Tennessee Department of Health and all these other departments. We consider that and find out if these numbers are true, if they're a true number or if there's a whole lot of fa- of false negatives in Monroe County. So I'd like to direct, I'd like to make a motion that we direct our, our superintendent to find out if these numbers are true active cases or if, and they use all this information in, in gathering this, uh, gathering, making this conclusion for our county.
Can I say something, Dr. McClendon? Can I jump in and say something?
One minute.
Yeah.
I have a motion on the floor here.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
It's all right. Uh, I've got a motion on the floor. Is there a second? There's a second. Okay, the motion fails due to lack of second. Uh, Ms. Gray, was you want to say something?
Yes. I appreciate what you've said. Um, I would like to say that as far as that Choda and as far as whenever, um, the students see the nurse practitioner in the school-based clinics and they get the PCR test. And of course, the PCR test is a molecular test. It is a confirmatory test. Uh, but they are, all the, all the other things that you've mentioned basically says, in layman's terms, are the providers looking at other symptoms that the students are having. So yes, they most definitely are looking at the symptoms to make sure. So in other words, if a student comes in, and of course, and I'm sure Teresa can confirm too, the people who are coming to the health department are coming because they're symptomatic. They have symptoms and/or they've been exposed. So we're not just having a lot of people come through and be tested for no apparent reason. Um, and I think that's what, and the other thing I will say is if you, I know, and Teresa may or may not confirm, am I right, Teresa, that if a person is symptomatic and they have, you know, one or two of the high-risk symptoms and they come through, they've been exposed. Um, in other words, the Tennessee Department of Health does not believe that there really is any such thing as a false positive.
Right.
They are symptomatic.
Right.
And I'm correct.
Correct. And then they're counted as a probable. But I will, and to address as far as true numbers, uh, the ones of our active cases in, in Monroe County, 577 active cases, all of those cases are contacted. And it may be a delay, but they, the reason that we know that they're accurate is because someone has physically talked to them on the phone and traced them. And if it's a student, they've talked to their mom or their dad. So they've actually in the database, in the MBS, MBS database that for the state, there's notes between, every single person that is positive, every person, you know. So they've been talked to. Now, they're not tracing as much now, I think after day six. Um, and then a lot of the things that I've gotten back over the past week or so to send to Jackie, the kids may already be out of quarantine. Um, they've, there's been a little delay in the last few weeks on that side. But yeah, the folks are actually, and I feel confident in the, in the test for sure, because false negative with the PCR has not been, um, an issue. That's been more of an issue with the rapid test.
With the antigen test. That's right. Yes.
If we have such a high number and a low population density, according to these experts, that indicates a whole lot of false positive. And according to Tennessee Department of Health itself, says that they don't require all this. Now, some people may be doing this and if you have, if you have information in front of you which says otherwise, I'd like to hear it. Uh, I like to see it written in print, as Dr. Uh, McClendon likes to say, believe but verify. So if you have something in front of you that re- uh, refutes this, by all means, uh, put it out there. This is just what I got from research from all these different places in the CDC and the World Health Organization. They're supposed to be above the Tennessee and I saw no requirement in their website that said all three of these are required. In some places may very well, they may very well do it and I'm glad they do. I hope they, I hope they're all, I hope these numbers are too high. But, uh, I, I like to, I like to see some verification of this.
Okay. Any other board members have some comments about what you've heard, what you've been told or whatever?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, um, I, I think, uh, Don raised a valid point here. The, uh, rapid tests are not that accurate. What percentage of our cases are reported through the rapid test and not through the, the lab test? Does that make any sense? Teresa?
The majority, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jackie.
No, I was just going to tell you, you're muted. Go ahead.
Um, we, I would have to look that up. The majority are the PCR, only because they know they can come to the health department, drive through and get it. Um, the ones at the hospital are the PCR test, same with Choda. Uh, rapid test maybe, you know, we have a lot of people that if we're not testing, they call and ask. We send them to, uh, fast pace or an urgent care that, um, so I, I could actually pull that data from somewhere, uh, to see. Actually, I think it's on the Tennessee Department of Health website. Uh, maybe that's a breakdown. I, I would have to check and see.
Please don't be silly.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jackie. And we haven't, how many of the rapid tests have we actually given, uh, in our clinics? Because really, the rapid test has only been around and available for probably what? Maybe the last 15, 20 days?
Yes, uh, very few. I would say probably if I were guessing, we may have, um, less than 20 is what we, less than 20 is what we've actually done in the school, but.
And they're exhibiting symptoms though.
Yes, yes.
That's, that's in the school.
That's in the school. Yeah, about 20 of those tests. Uh, but now I will say this, those were the binex now. Uh, that, that is a, even though that was a rapid test, excuse me, those were the Abbott ID now. And even those, those were rapid tests, it is a P, it is a molecular rapid test. And that's what Choda has. So, uh, Mr. Wees, I, I would really like to see, I, I haven't seen the, the information that you have there in front of you, but I would really like to see it and kind of read for myself, so I could, um.
On the CDC website and the WHO and all that. Uh, and I agree with what you say there about the, in the school, but we're basing our, our decisions on what the whole pop, as a population, not the school population. We're basing, we're, all this information now is on what the whole population, which is a low-density population with a high number. The indications are, not my words, this is, uh, the WHO, you can look that up. Says there's the high likelihood of a high, uh, cycle transition there, uh, there that there's a whole lot of false positive based on the whole population. Should we be using our, uh, school closure, whatever, based on the whole population, which is a very low percent of the whole population, I believe?
I think that overall.
Asking that question, asking that question.
Yeah, and it is a good, it's a valid question. And I, just for, and I want to verify too, that the test that they're doing at the health department, which is where the majority of the testing is happening, those are the PCR molecular tests. You, I, I want to make sure the board understands the PCR molecular tests are the best test and the only test that I know of that, that you're able to get tested with. So I'm confused as to what that information is saying. We have the antigen test, which is the rapid test. And then you have the PCR, which is a send-out test. It's some polymachronase, uh, molecular testing. So I'm confusing myself a little bit, so I'll, I'll go back and look for that. Um, but there again, I feel like overall, the number of cases that we have in this county, um, in conjunction with the deaths that we've had and the number of people who have said, I, I was the sickest I've ever been in my life, is proof in the pudding. That's, I mean, that's just my, that's my professional opinion on how I feel about that. And there may indeed be a few, um, you know, uh, false positives, but I don't suspect that there's that many.
Well, I don't disagree with what you're, I don't disagree with what you're saying there. But according to these, these people right here, the experts, not me, arise in the number of cases does not mean that, that the, that it's getting worse or advancing. It does not mean there's an increase in the number of deaths in that. And to say that it's only a few, uh, well, according to the World Health Organization, these other people, if you get that high of a number in a low-density population, then the risk is way up there of that, that, that. And the, uh, Tennessee Department of Health says all COVID ta- ta- test types, PCR antigen antibodies, all result types, positive, negative, inconclusive. That's what's supposed to be reported. That's straight off their website.
Now, I had her, I know someone that went to Choda. They got, I guess it's called the rapid testing and it came back negative. And they had an appointment with the health department to do the test. And Choda advised them to go on to the health department because the testing may not be correct.
So you're saying that they advised them to go on to the health department to get the PCR send-out test?
Yes.
Okay. And do you know what the result of that was?
I don't think they really went on because they were getting to starting to feel better. So they just didn't even go.
Yeah.
So, so one of the things I like to direct the conversation back, because the science is good and the World Health Organization is great and we all try to read as much as we can, as many, many things as we can. What I would like to take the conversation back to is Monroe County schools and the number of children that, um, and the number of children that Nurse Jackie and Nurse Harold both were seeing that were sick, and the number of employees who were without a test were symptomatic with something and had to be out. And so that is, as your director, that is where I am the most concerned. I'll be very transparent with you. I took a test and it was negative, but I had every symptom. And my test was negative, and so I just self-quarantined myself and my child. My test was negative. I don't know if I took it too early or I took it too late, but I had every symptom. And so I think many, many people may even be in the same boat that I was in. Maybe they took a test or didn't take a test, but they are very symptomatic. And I think that's what we probably have to think about as a school district. The number of employees and the number of children who have become symptomatic and been around others.
I, I agree with, I agree with that 100% right there, if I may say. But all we've talked about today is the number of cases in the county. If you want to make it per school, much as our flu is, I'm, I'm agreeing with you. As I opened up, our number one thing is keep everybody safe.
Nurse Jackie, you had our last week's numbers. Could you share the last week's numbers, please?
Okay, last week's numbers, and, and remember, you know, of course, they're out. So a lot of these that have not come to me, these have come directly off of the, the website. And so do you just want, hang on just a minute, let me get, get my notes here. Okay. And so now, are you wanting just like the daily, the increase of daily numbers, Dr. McClendon, or what do you want me to give you?
Maybe if you could just share with him the number of maybe like symptomatic or people that have had to go out because they've been around symptomatic people.
Oh, well, now, last week, you know, of course, nobody was reporting to me because we've been out. This week, this week alone, this week alone, I've had, I've had six staff members that are positive. And for instance, one staff member, you know, four, she has three family members that work in the school system, and so they all had to quarantine because they were together over Christmas. And so, you know, typically what we see is, or what I have seen, I think, I don't know if Teresa would agree, typically what I have seen is whenever you have a positive case in the school, they usually have to quarantine an average of about seven people with them.
Could you go back to the, could you go back to the week before school let out? Because that might be a little bit more accurate in the picture and what some of the concerns with our.
For, the week before school let out, we had 34 new cases. None of those were staff. And, you know, it seemed, I mean, I was reporting 39 and 40 new cases for the last three weeks before we were out of school.
That per school, is that per school or per system? How many in each school? Can you divide that out to schools?
I, I can divide it out in, in schools, but I don't have that in front of me right now. That was, you know, like per, that was per staff and students.
Or the whole, and what's, what's that out of? Five, five, how many, how many, how many students and staff do we have?
Well, that was for the week. That was just for one week. It was 40 new cases for the week.
Out of how many students and how many staff? What we got? 200 staff?
We have about 4,900. So if you get about, and that's in students, so. And then for staff, we probably are around about 700 employees. So if you have seven employees out of 700, you're at 10%.
Seven out of 700?
I'm sorry, 70. I'm sorry. I'm not, I'm thinking, yes, seven. Is that what you said, Nurse Jackie? We had seven?
7%?
No, no, no.
Well, no, no, before we got out, we, before we got out, we had 13. The last thing that I reported to you all is that we had 13% of our staff and students, excuse me, students that were out. Students that were on quarantine or that were sick.
So it was 13% instead of 10? Okay.
13%, yes, ma'am.
Thank you for correcting.
And based on Teresa's numbers for the county, we had 24% of our staff and students that were, that were in quarantine, yes, or that were sick. It represented 24% of those positive, excuse me, 24% of the positive cases that we had in the schools for staff and students was represented, you know, the number for the county right before we got out for Christmas.
Is that the, is that the schools you closed down, Dr. McClendon? Is that the schools you closed down, the two or three?
So schools, that's not how we ended up having to close those schools. Those schools were actually closed due to staffing issues.
Staffing, that's what I'm talking about. She was, she was talking about staffing, yes.
So when we can't get the adequate number of substitutes to cover those particular schools.
In that particular school.
So that's why we closed down versus the number of positive cases. I'll be transparent again and say, once we get three or four positive cases going into school, the subs will not come. They, they refused. A lot of our subs, you know, retired teachers and older, and they have some health concerns. And so they do not come. Once we probably, I don't know what the threshold is, but probably around after about three, they start telling the subs system, and they stop taking them. They'll stop taking the assignments.
All right, let me, let me get, let me jump in here. We, we've still not heard from some board members, and I don't want, I want everybody to have an opportunity to speak. And so, board members, again, if you've got something you'd like to share, we'd like to hear it, or I'd like to hear it anyway.
I got one other question about substitutes. When you mentioned substitutes, would, would, would they get their shots as long as the other, with the teachers and everything?
But as the question of Miss Harold, we did figure bus drivers in there as contracted employees. Ms. Harold, what are the, what are the things about substitutes?
My first thought is, yes, we would need to, but I definitely don't want to say that till I know about my vaccine numbers. So I guess once I get an idea about how much vaccine we're going to have, then we can maybe go from there, don't you think? So hopefully, I'll know that the first of the week. But I, in a way, though, it would be defeating the purpose too, if we didn't do the subs, but definitely just the meaning.
Good point, Mr. Upton. And I'm sure Ms. Harold will do all she can to include those, if she can, as soon as she can. Anyone else? All right, as at this board meeting, we do not have to take any action. You know, the primary purpose was to go over the numbers, the latest numbers, and, and it turned out with the teachers getting the immunization opportunities earlier than we thought, it's worked out to be a pretty good time, as far as that timing goes. So as far as taking any action, we do not have to. I just wanted Dr. McClendon to have some input from the board in terms of what we thought and, and the direction maybe we, as a system, need to go. Does anyone else have anything else they want to bring up?
Bring it up.
I don't, I don't mean off the wall here. I'm talking about what we're talking about here, reopening schools.
I would like to start getting the number for school, the positive cases. Is that possible, Ms. McClendon, to get to us?
So, yes and no, because the state has asked us if it's less than five not to report out. But, so we can give you, until most recently, we've not had five at one school. So the reason they don't like us to do that is because some schools may have one or two, and then people know who that is, and it brings another sort of violation about. So we don't mind sharing. We can give you an update every Monday. Jackie and I talk, and she updates the, the state website. And we can send you that exact information as well, but I cannot guarantee that I'll be able to share with you if there are less than five at a school, just because there's sometimes only one, and then everybody would know.
Thank you.
Mr. Rangel, we have those options. I know you said we don't have to take any action, but just because this is such a heavy, heavy decision, I would like to see the board maybe take a vote on those options, if at all possible.
What's the players of the board?
That's the recommendations, again, from the ministers, from the director, her staff, what's your recommendations?
So I think my recommendation is that we delay, as our healthcare providers have said. I think that we do a remote learning day Monday. Dr. Strickland, will you put up that slide, please? I think that my recommendation is that we use our option for delay. And then secondly, I think that we go with option three. If everybody kind of doesn't want to wait on the vaccine, then I think we go with option three, which is just a very, very soft opening. And then thirdly, I think even though, you know, I think our healthcare professionals have kind of advised against it, we open as normal. So if I had to rank those three, those would be my three in the way in which I would rank them.
Dr. McClendon, if I understand what you're recommending is that for the next week, we use stack days, or whatever you call it, till we can get our teachers inoculated, should they desire to have that. Then for one week, we will be in Plan B, then we'll be returning our students to the classroom after that.
So, so just a little tweak on that. I think we look at, I think we delay for this one week. I think that we look at our numbers. And if our numbers indicate, as in our plan, that we are in this Plan B schedule, then I think we do that as long as the numbers dictate it. If the numbers dictate it, then I think we just open up as normal and we move forward.
Okay, as option three said, one week and then all return. I'm just trying to get clarification there.
Yes. Yes.
So I, so I.
Yes.
Dr. McClendon?
Yes, sir.
Are you saying you're basing it on the numbers for the county, or are you saying you're basing it on the number of students in the schools?
So if you remember, if you go back to Tennessee Department of Health's rubric, you don't shut down a school, or you don't make all your decisions based on your county numbers. It is almost like a puzzle. You have to take your county numbers. Dr. Strickland, can you pull up that last page of that rubric from TDOH? I'm sorry. If you guys would hang on just a minute while she pulls this up. I think she, we sent it.
I've got it, I've got it ready. No problem.
Thank you. If you look here on community spread is high, that is not a reason to close down your building just because community or your district, because community spread is high. If you look down here in the yellow, where we got into trouble sort of as a community, was that we had two or more unlinked cases, meaning there was no common classes, they weren't close friends, they weren't teammates. We had lots of those. And so when we start, and Nurse Jackie, you and Ms. Harold might want to speak to that because you guys extensively, we all talked to Dr. Sternman extensively. It has to be a culmination of all those things before you think about shutting down, delaying, closing, or any of those things. It can just, it cannot just be high community spread. And Nurse Jackie, I think you and, and Ms. Harold really talked with Dr. Sternman from a medical side, and maybe you could explain if I didn't, if you think I left something out.
Well, if there's one thing that I could add is on our, on our main website, the number there where we look at the green, yellow, and red, those numbers are based on, so the number, when we're in the red now, that's 10%. He asked if it was county numbers or student numbers. It's both. It's 10%. The number that you're looking at on the website is 10% of our student numbers. It's 1% of our county numbers. Am I right on that, Dr. McClendon?
I understand, I understand that. I'm trying to understand, is that in the Sweetwater area, the Masewell area, the Telecore area, where's the majority of these numbers coming from that would indicate that maybe we need to take some, some action and delay this?
So, so.
That's three distinct areas.
So Nurse Harold, and maybe you could speak to this. I think what happens, Mr. Wees, we don't ever, as a school district, want to be considered a public health nuisance, so to speak. And so what happens if we're a breeding ground for COVID, then that affects the community. You know, it, it's so, we, we forget frequently how much schools and education in our school district affects the community at large. And so that's why we kind of look to these particular metrics to help us not become a spreader or a nuisance of public health in our community as the district. And Ms. Harold or Ms., Nurse Jackie, y'all might could elaborate on that a little bit more.
Well, and one thing too, that Jackie said earlier that is so true, the cases, and, and I appreciate you guys. I mean, the whole thing about not doing an actual report per count or per school is because of HIPAA, because you have smaller schools, you know, and then the word gets out, and then that's kind of a breach of their, you know, personal health information. So, but if you look at the, across the county, it is. I mean, it's, it's in all zip codes, so to speak. I mean, you know, as far as our numbers. So, and then one thing that Jackie said too, that goes along with that, is once one child is out, okay, if that child lives with grandmother, and then grandmother gets, I mean, you know, it's just, it's kind of the pyramid or the, the branches on the tree, how it continues to, to grow. So I, I think this will be a positive move as far as, you know, the delay for a week. I think that will be, and this is definitely keeping with the, the guidance.
But, but I'll, I'll do whatever. You know, you know, it's more, Mr..
I think that the kids need to be back in school. I mean, every time I go anywhere in the public, I'm getting chewed up and spit out. But I do think that we've got to keep our staff healthy. So I want to make a motion that we go back to school the 11th, we go back to school full, full force at that time.
And, and you'd like to play?
All right, our motion is we go back to school full-time on the 11th. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to the motion? Second to the motion. All right, motion dies due to lack of seconds. Is there any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendations of director and staff.
Okay. Do you want that clarified before we ask for a second, or do you want to proceed on?
Would it be clarified that we delay?
Wait a minute, I'm calling Mr. Upton. Mr. Upton, do you want, Mr. Upton, do you want that clarified, or do you want to just leave it as it is before I ask for a second?
Well, we can clarify.
Okay, would you?
Exactly, you're talking about exactly which?
Yes, what does this, what does this mean when you say?
Okay, the recommendations, the options that she presented, that, that she said what her first and second, third option was. I like to go with her first option, or their first option here in the staff.
Okay, would you, would someone explain to the board what that is?
So the first, the first option would be option for delay. I think the asterisk is there, where we would delay opening until January the 11th. We would review our numbers, and then we would do a soft opening, which would be option three, if the numbers dictate that. And then if the numbers don't dictate that. And then if the numbers don't dictate that, then we go immediately into option one.
Okay, is there a second to this motion?
Second.
All right, now we can discuss it a little more openly. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Well, let me jump in there, John. If you delay it a week and do all these things that, that we just talked about, I don't see, I don't see any difference than starting it as scheduled on the fourth, and because as she just indicated, check the numbers. Well, can we not come back here, start our students Monday or Tuesday, whenever the school will be open? Do all our Chromebooks and all that stuff and check the numbers? Because this is a fluid thing. There's no guarantee that this thing is going to stand for a week. As indicated, even though Tennessee Department thinks that the cases are going to go down, not spike.
Anyone else?
How does this affect sports?
Well, the, the question will, needs to be asked, when you say delay, you're saying we're going to use bank days, which means no one will be at school, is that right?
So if you go back and you actually look, I have permission on inclement weather days to allow athletics to occur or not to occur. And I would go back and allow athletics to occur following those T double S double A rules.
Okay, in addition to athletics, you're talking about clubs and organizations also.
I'm only talking about the athletics, but I'd like to take them one by one because that's the, that's the option of the director, once you use, utilize an inclement weather day. And I don't have a problem taking those one by one, case by case. But I think, I don't think you should shut down the athletics. I think we use the T double S double A rules.
Okay, and, and Mr. Lee has sent those out to board members and also to athletic directors and principals. I understand, is that right, Mr. Lee? I think he's here.
I think Charlie's with us.
Yes.
Yes, that's correct. I actually, I've talked to most of the A Ds and all, but I didn't really send it out because I was going to wait and see what you all did.
Okay, all right.
But they know, they're making their plans about what I sent to you all, about getting a list of only the household members coming into the games.
Right, very good.
Oh, that being said.
Have you leave out the cheerleaders out of that?
That was a, by T double S double A. I have a cheerleader at my house and she's not too happy about that either. I'm not too happy after I paid all my money, but it's a rule, so I'm a rule follower. But I think.
Was it a rule or a suggestion?
A rule.
Was it?
The Department of Education adopted what Tennessee, T double S double A said, if I read that correctly.
Yeah, it was pretty, unfortunately, it was pretty clear. Like I said, I have a cheerleader at home and she's not too happy. And I think cheerleading should be considered athletics, just like ball playing. So I hate that we got, that, that group got left out of the conversation.
I agree with that.
This was the director from the Tennessee, from the governor actually, and not necessarily from the T double S double A. They adopted T double S double A guidelines. Anybody, any other comments on the, the motion?
Yeah, so that being said, if we start athletics back, so our kids are already going to be around each other, so why wouldn't you start school back?
Well, it'll be smaller groups. So we're only talking about, and I'm hoping, that we're only talking about a week. And so just in that week, those kids, they actually have started playing and practicing after the twenty-third anyway. They were playing and practicing as they would all the time. So the play and the practice would go on, I'll be honest. That's another way to do a little soft opening. So we would allow them to come back and do the playing and the practicing. The only people there would be in the stands, that would be their family members. And one of the things I think is going to be very, very important, we're going to have to do a better job of enforcing at our athletic event what T double S double A has said for us. And I plan on reaching out to our principals with, in conjunction with our SROs, because we're just going to have to tell people, we know you love each other, we know that you miss seeing each other, but you're going to have to sit between your pieces of tape as a family member. And if, if you're not, you know, if you don't want to follow the rules somewhere, you, you, you know, you don't have to participate. And unfortunately, we're just there with that, Ms. Kegel, if that helps you answer that question. And, and many of the parents have said, Doc, I don't care if I ever get to see my child play, as long as they get to go and play. And so I like that idea of soft opening with the athletics.
Any other questions or discussion about the motion before we vote?
Mr. Chairman, if I could speak to the motion itself.
Sure.
I can support to the motion. I just know that what we're doing, education now, is really causing our kids to suffer. Test scores are falling, we get the thing we got from the governor this week. I think as soon as we possibly reasonably can, we need to get our kids back in the classroom. That's where education takes place. And I think we're kind of all on the same page there. But I just think it needs to be stated that as soon as we can, as soon as we reasonably and safely can, we need to return our children to the classroom. Thank you, sir.
You're good. Anyone else? All right, we're going to vote. Vote will be by roll call. And if you vote for the motion, then I need an affirmative vote, which would be a yes or an aye, either one. And a no vote against the motion would be a no or a no, either one. Mr. Upton?
Yes.
Mr. Wees?
Wees.
No.
Dr. Shitman?
Yes.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly, ever get on line? Okay, Ms. Freeman? Ms. Freeman, you still there? Ms. Standridge?
Yes.
Ms. Kegel?
So let me get this right. So we're going to postpone till that, so that the staff can get their shots. And we're going to open on the eleventh.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, there will be no school on Tuesday to Thursday, Tuesday to Friday, fifth through the eights.
Okay, yes.
Yes, your answer is yes.
Yes.
And my vote is yes. Let me come back again one more time. Mr. Kelly, did you ever get on line? And Ms. Freeman, are you still there?
Okay, so she's here. Let me put her on speakerphone because it keeps freezing up. Okay, Freeman, I'm going to put you on speakerphone and you tell us.
Okay, I'm making sure we're going, tell me again, to make sure I'm right on this. On the eleventh, it's the one week, it's all planned, but what, my phone's too crazy, so I can't really, I don't know.
Yes, so our plan will be to delay so that those who want to can get the vaccine, and that would be the first thing. The second thing is, we hope that we would be open to open all the way up on January the eleventh. But if our numbers tend to be high, we'll do our soft opening with Plan B. And then just as immediately, as soon as we can, we're going to go into all the way open.
And athletics would be open.
And athletics would be open.
Yes, did you hear me, my phone froze up for a second?
She said yes, did you hear?
Okay, that's what, that's what I heard, yes. Okay. Check me here, Ms. Blair, but I've got six to, I'm sorry, seven to one. Motion passes seven to one. Okay, any, anything else as related to what this special board meeting was called for? Our next regular scheduled meeting is January the fourteenth. Don't know as yet where it will be, but that will be announced here as soon as we can.
Dr. McClendon? I'm sorry, Dr. McClendon, can I say one thing real quick? As far as the vaccine goes, do you think it would be a good idea not to put that out to the public just yet until Ms. Harold notifies her staff of the plan? And if she, is that?
We're on live stream today, so.
Okay.
No.
Okay, okay, sorry, okay, all right.
That's okay, yeah.
Okay.
I'm sure it's already been texted.
Sorry, Doc, okay, sorry, Teresa.
That's okay.
Okay.
So now we're with Dr. Windsor, so that she can work with principals or admin, so we can start getting our count in early in names for you and Ms. Harold. Because I know that's heavy lift for you guys. And I don't want it to, I do want you guys to enjoy the end of your.
Yeah, it's okay.
And then Monday, we'll hit it a hundred.
Ms. Teresa Harold, I want, I want to thank you for including all employees of the Education Department, because that, you know, support staff is just as important as anyone else. And all we hear in the papers is teachers, 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 you know. And thank you for including those. And if you can get our substitutes in there, along with the bus drivers, that would be even better because they come in contact with the same folks we do.
Oh, absolutely, you're quite welcome. I just think it's, it defeats the purpose if we, you know, vaccinate some and not others, so. And I will say one.
Thank you so much.
Oh, can I say one thing? Saturday, we are having our vaccination clinic at the Health Department, and we're starting in the seventy-five and older. So we have a lot of appointments already booked, but if you do have relatives or, you know, that are in that age bracket, we'll be more than glad to vaccinate them. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. And thank you everyone for their participation today and for the information that's been shared. And I look forward to seeing you on January the fourteenth, so meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, John.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
New Year.